Can I ask everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I just ask for a moment of silence for John Matola, his father? He's, John Matola's on the Board of Finance, served with me on the Board of Education, and also on the RTM, and his father just passed away recently. His father was a teacher at Fairfield Woods for 35 years, and he was a very popular social studies teacher who I actually had. He created the Washington trip for kids in eighth grade. It was his sort of project, and he, kids, they do it to this day, and it is one of the most beloved trips that kids get to enjoy and learn about our nation's history. So I just wanted to offer a moment of silence for John and his family. Thank you. So, let's see, I just want to, for clarification purposes, we had some back and forth regarding language that was used for the Fairfield Arts Commission, and I think we incorrectly titled on the June 5th agenda that it was the Fairfield Arts Advisory Committee, and in the, all the documentation and backup, it did say Fairfield Arts Commission. So just, I want to ask for amendment to change the Fairfield Arts Advisory Committee to Fairfield Arts Commission in item four of the minutes to the June 5th minutes, the draft minutes, and change them.
So moved.
I'll second it.
And also want to clarify that against Clara L. Lou Barr is a U, and just want to make sure that that is reflected in those minutes, too. Do I accept that as part of the amendment?
Yeah, we-
I'll accept it, yeah.
Do we need to move?
Okay, very good. Is there any, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Is there any discussion from the public on this item? Seeing none, back to the board.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, and I would just make the comment that the reason it's important is because commission versus advisory has different rights and roles and responsibilities. So it's an important clarification. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that's, so now the minutes are amended. Can I get a motion to approve the amended minutes, the minutes from May 15, 2023, and the amended minutes of June 5th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the body? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is appointments, and we do have some here. Mr. Fadabene is here, who it was very nice to see, attending, and we have Don Kleber calling in, I believe. Don, are you on the line? Okay, well, maybe, I'm sorry? No, that's for a diff, no, I was looking, John, Don Kleber. And I see Gilbert, is that you? Mr. Donovan? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Is he muted? He's trying.
Are we, we- Can you unmute him?
I can't.
Oh, you have to unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yes. And, okay, so I'm gonna ask for, I just want to just clarify, we were unaware that we couldn't reappoint some of the people on our Ethics Commission. It kind of came up last minute, and- Yes, yes, we can. So we were trying to put together a list, and so we put, I thought, together a pretty good list of people to replace those who could not be reappointed. So on the appointments, we have Gilbert Donovan to replace Brian Cantor, whose term expired, Paul Fadabene of Craig Van Steenbergen, whose term also expired, and then Don Kleber, who will take the place of Dana Carey, whose term expired. And do you have a motion to approve?
Are we gonna, is the motion to approve all three, it's fine? I just, is the motion to approve all three? Okay, so moved.
Yes.
Seconded.
Okay, very good. And like I said, we do have Mr. Fadabene here, and we have Mr. Donovan on the line, and I don't, I think, Don, Don, are you on, did you call in? I don't know if he's muted or if he's on. So I'll just open it up to the board, if anybody wants to ask any of our appointees questions, or if you have any comments.
Sure, I'll comment. I know Mr. Donovan, Chip Lovelly. I've known him and worked with him over the course of my tenure serving, and have found him to be an upstanding, ethical, thoughtful, mindful person. I had a chance to speak to the other two candidates, Paul and Donald, and we had very solid conversations about the importance of neutrality, and I even spoke to Craig, Mr. Van Steenbergen, if I'm not butchering that, hopefully, about the legacy that he's leaving behind, and look forward to continuing, having that continue on the current board that's serving, which is to say that it's really apolitical, but really about the, this set forth in just our charter, and also in looking ahead and kind of creating opportunities to clarify some things in the future and to really do some good work. So thank you to the candidates for taking time to speak with me, and to Craig, who's leaving, and thank you for their service, and to Dana, Dan, thank you, and just want to wish these new candidates well. They all have my support.
Thank you, Tom. Tom, you're on, Tom, you're on mute, sorry.
Probably the smartest out sound all day. I wanted to thank everybody for their service. Mr. Stan B., Van Steenbergen, I've known for quite a few years, and I appreciate all the work he's done for the town, as well as everybody else. The three candidates to replace him, thank you so much for stepping up. Mr. Fadabene, long time no see. It's good to see you back in a position. I know you'll do great, as will your colleagues, and I appreciate you taking on this assignment. So thanks so much to all of you.
Thank you, and I, too, would like to echo that we don't have a long line of people waiting to, to serve on boards and commissions, and ethics, you know, while they sometimes are a little sleepy, they don't meet often, sometimes they do. And so it's important to have people that have legal experience, or background is always very helpful, I think, and to have people of integrity and character to listen to sometimes complicated matters. And I do want to note that, you know, to Nancy's point, we're actually, we're actually reducing the amount of Republicans on this commission with replacing an R with a U, and because it doesn't matter what the party affiliation is, it's just ethical review of matters that are brought before the commission. So I think we have some good people here, and I look forward to supporting all of you. And I would offer anyone who is being appointed the opportunity to say a few words if you would like to. Mr. Fadabene, would you like to go up to the podium? Sorry, yes, podium. All right.
Well, in the past, I've served town governments, it's been a while since I have, so there are going to be a lot of new faces I don't recognize, but I've always, my objective is just to be fair and objective, and try and render a decision I can based on the standards of conduct, and to the best I can to hear the issues, and there are going to be some difficult decisions, I guess, as there always are, but hopefully make some fair and objective decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul, for taking the time to speak with me and conveying that in the course of our conversation as well.
Mr. Donovan, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, I'm on the phone now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. So I'm Gilbert Donovan, I go by Chip, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for considering me for this role. My wife and I have lived in Fairfield for almost 40 years. We raised our two daughters here, and I've been in public service. I've served on commissions and elected office at Fairfield, and I've served as a volunteer for a number of public and private organizations. These experiences, plus a 40-year career with publicly held, large financial institutions that have high standards for ethics and regular training, prepared me for this kind of role, and just look forward to the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure if Don was able to get on or not, but Don has obviously an impressive resume and is fully qualified, I think, to be able to fill this position on the Ethics Commission. Is there any additional comment from the board?
No.
Is there any comment from the public? Back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nancy, did I hear you? I'm sorry.
I said, yes, aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, motion carries unanimously, and thank you all for stepping up to do this, and what I always tell to appointees, you're, you can stay, but you're free to leave if you'd like, it's up to you.
Thank you.
Our next, our, thank you. Our next item is Fair TV. So this is another unusual situation where we had a lot of people who either resigned or termed out, and we were kind of in an interesting situation because the leader, Jerry Spino, who is really the person who started all of this, is going to be leaving soon, and so we, it is the responsibility of Fair TV, the commission, to choose its next person, and so we were really, we were looking for people to fill. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Paul Foley of Spring Road, and he actually, he's traveling and was not able to tune in today, and also Lee Camlet, I'm sorry, of Beach Road, and that will be filling the resignation of Mark Joyly. And those are the, those are the appointments. And I know that the chairperson reached out to them and has had conversations with them and feels good about it. And again, it's another one of those commissions that there's not really a long line of people like wanting to serve, so I was very grateful we were able to have these two. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is there any comment from the board?
Yeah, I would say that this, to me, as all boards are important, all boards and commissions, they serve a real function of checks and balances to any administration. The Fair TV Commission serves as an important role within government and the effective functioning of it because it serves to, you know, for the transparency and for the way many residents get information. So while we take all, I personally take all of these appointments very seriously, this is one that I think we all should be paying particular attention to. I did speak to both candidates, and then more, and I was, and I'm pleased to support them both today. They understand the seriousness with which they can approach this, this work, and then the hard duty of filling very big shoes. But I was also pleased that after a conversation earlier today with Pam Iakono, who's filling in a position in the administration, she's willing to, she shares my approach, or shares my feeling about the importance of these boards and commissions. So I look forward to having a conversation at her, with her, to talk about ways in which we can really come to a better understanding of a process that would work for both majority and minority selectmen in the future. So just want to make that general comment, and both candidates have my support today.
First of all, in looking at your backgrounds, very impressive and equal to the task of this commission, as Nancy alluded to, and I'll add on, Fair TV has grown to grow an integral role, to play an integral role in the town, and with the local newspapers, the demise of a couple, and the stretching of staff on many, they're, really, Fair TV has become the outlet for the townspeople to understand what's going on in government. And that fair and impartial view of what happens at our town meetings and the like are very important. With Jerry leaving, and I don't know if Jerry's in the room now, I didn't know that he was contemplating retiring. I wish him the best of luck, and if he's there, I just want to thank you, Jerry, for everything you've done through the years to bring this to where it is, and I'd like to wish the new folks the best in bringing it into new heights. I think the town relies on it greatly at this point in time. And to the people that are leaving the board at this point, thank you very much for your service, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom. If there's no further discussion from the board, is there any comment from the public on the two appointments? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And so on that note, Tom, I know Mr. Spino doesn't like, he's a very humble and lovely person, and doesn't like a lot of attention, but I didn't think we could pass by this opportunity to recognize you for your efforts. And to Tom's point, Fair TV has been an integral part of allowing the community the opportunity to know what's going on in their town, to watch boards and commissions, however boring sometimes it may be and long, to actually see what's happening, watching the sausage get made, so to speak, and having the opportunity to just click on the internet and watch a meeting, and it's been very valuable to me as the first elect person to include those links to the, to the meeting, and alert people's attention to specific meetings that may be of importance to them. And you've done incredible work, sincerely incredible, and I don't know how we'd ever pay you back for your effort, your dedication, and he's like, well, so I'm gonna actually get up, and if I, I'm gonna really put you on the spot, Jerry, sorry.
Okay.
And so I would like to read this proclamation to you.
All right.
The Town of Fairfield proudly honors Jerry Gerald Spino for your outstanding years as the manager for Fair TV, the town's education and government access channel, whereas media in all forms, from print to screen, have always interested you. Most of your fascinating career has been out in the front and developing projects, building interest and supporting their growth. In the 1970s, when you lived in New York, you spun records for Soho Disco, ooh, and in 1972, you copyrighted the term meta-
Mediophile.
Mediophile, which means a student of medium and appreciation of the audio arts. Whereas, you worked as an associate curator of Video Art in Everson Museum of Art in Syracuse. The museum worked with George Steery, better known as the father of public access television, interesting, who helped shape the federal laws that brought about public access TV. One of the first shows you worked on was a museum-wide installation piece conceived by John Lennon and Yoko Ono, ooh, okay, I've got to hear more about that. You also worked with the New York State Council of the Arts in developing an audience for the form. You lived in many places, including LA, where you worked as a waiver theater and one of the producers and creator of Law and Order.
I worked for the producer.
Wow. And the technical director of LA Improv, where you redesigned and built a new showroom and were the union prop maker for the studio. Wow. And you worked for CBS as well. Very cool. In the 80s, you returned to New York and met your beautiful wife, Mary Alice, a talented film editor, who later received her master's degree at Fairfield due to teach, and in the 90s, you both proudly raised your two children, Matthew, an HBO producer, and William, an independent filmmaker. You had an impact on these kids, huh?
Yeah, they're kind of in their blood.
Whereas, wanting to serve your community to help provide more public access to our town meetings and events, Jerry, you helped get Fair TV off the ground, and you have been the driving force of it since it started. As a Fair TV manager, and since 2010, you have been so committed to this and going above and beyond many times, being intricately involved in every aspect of Fair TV. And as you near your retirement at the end of this month, the Town of Fairfield thanks and appreciates you for your outstanding years of dedication, hard work, and you have been extraordinarily instrumental in the success of our Fair TV. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Elkhart, the first elect woman of the Town of Fairfield, do proclaim Monday, June 19th, as Jerry Spino Day.
All right.
I'm going to have to open the newsletter, you're going to have to be in the newsletter, Jerry.
All right. Tie with that shirt.
I'll just get one this way. Thank you. Good? Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to miss you. And these, and these Fair TV people, they're going to got big shoes to fill.
They do.
You've got to get somebody really good.
If I could take a minute?
Yes.
There's one thing I'd just like to add.
Nice.
The municipal service that we provide, Fair TV provides, has been a pleasure to develop and get going down the road. Fair TV, however, belongs to the whole community. It's what they call public access, not public broadcasting.
Right.
Public access. And it's available to the community for their needs as well. They can provide content if they would like. So I just wanted to leave that note, that the community has input. The meetings are, of course, for them, they have a better town, but hopefully with their participation, we can expand the community. So thanks a lot, this is really wonderful, and it's been nice to see you, where you used to be, way back, Mr. Hoag and Mr. Fadabene was there on the front end, I think.
Yeah.
So thanks again, and it's been a pleasure.
Well, the pleasure is all ours. Thank you very much, Jerry.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Jerry, don't leave ya.
Yeah, I also-
The praise ringing is about to commence. Mary Hoag would like to-
I just want to say that Jerry, I was on the committee that created the commission, so we wrote everything up, and Jerry, we could not have done it without Jerry's knowledge, and that's the whole point of saying that it is for the community and we can provide community input, but as you know, I go, I like, I'm like a meeting groupie, like I go to a lot of meetings, I see Jerry a lot.
Right, yes.
And he is always there, and it doesn't matter how well he feels, or badly he feels, or the weather, or whatever it is, he's always, always been there for us. So I can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you.
So great job, Jerry.
Yes. Well said, well said. Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone on the board or anyone online who would like to make a comment? Go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, Jerry, I'm sorry I can't be there with you in person, but I will say this, and I want to say it emphatically, you are a, you have been an amazing bright spot to, every time I was able to be in the room. I loved our quick exchanges on what your sons were up to, or just the state of the industry generally, and now that you're going to hopefully have some time to relax, perhaps we can take these conversations and have more of a time where we're not all about the meetings, to really talk about the state of the industry and where we could go with Fair TV, because you're exactly right in terms of the public access piece. You've always been just a stalwart keeper and steward of this incredible, sort of giving this access to the community, and we're so lucky, definitely big shoes to fill, but I do hope that you'll get to enjoy some downtime and lots of good movie and TV watching.
So thank you, thank you for having me. Is there anyone else on the WebEx that would like to make any comments? I see the chairwoman of the Board of Ed, who spends a lot of time with Fair TV, she might have something.
We have one more rendezvous on the 20th.
We have one more rendezvous.
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
I will, I will, thank you, Brenda. I will take the opportunity, since you opened the door, to say yes, thank you for all of the years and years of many late nights, bringing all of the information to our community about our schools and our students. So I will see you again one more time with a lengthier thank you, but for tonight, I say thank you as well, and incredibly grateful for all that you have done for us here in Fairfield. Be well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right, Jerry.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you very much. I know you're not, I know, we just wanted to make sure we got you in. Okay. All right, our next item is item number five, to hear and consider, can I get a motion to hear and consider an act to approve the Sustainable Task Force partnering with the New England Smart Energy and use of the town seal as part of the UI initiative to perform home energy audits and energy retrofits for income-eligible residents of Fairfield.
So moved.
Motion?
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Very good, I'm going to open it up. Bob, do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Brenda. My name is Bob Wall, I'm the Chair of Sustainable Fairfield, and just to give a little background, we do a lot of campaigns and education and outreach in the community, and this year we're focusing on encouraging energy efficiency and conservation, particularly in light of the spike in the energy bills, and nowhere was this felt more difficult than in low-income and seniors who are on fixed incomes. So the purpose of this mailing is to encourage them to take advantage of a program offered by UI, which is actually free if you qualify under their, you know, income-eligible standards. So this is an opportunity at no cost to the town, no cost to Sustainable Fairfield, to reach a population that's been historically difficult to reach, and we do have a lot of precedent for using the town seal in mailings. We've done a number of solar campaigns previously in Fairfield, in which the town had approved use of the seal, and many other towns throughout the state are currently, or recently, have used the town seals for similar purposes. And New England Smart Energy is a Fairfield-based contractor that we've worked with on multiple occasions, and they've also worked in other towns, and I just wanted to mention that a letter from the town, or in this case, a postcard, is the most effective means of reaching people, because they get a lot of junk mail, but when they see the town is encouraging this, they tend to pay attention. And so we want people to take advantage of this because it is free, they are actually paying for it through their electric bills, they pay a small surcharge, but they're able to get a free home energy assessment, and many of the upgrades are similarly free or greatly reduced. So we think it's a great opportunity to help people to live more healthy and more comfortably, and I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
No, I appreciate that, and I, you're right, I think that, you know, it first came across my desk, I said, well, why don't you permission to use the seal, and, you know, what does it, you know, need to seal, but you're right, when they see an official town seal, they feel like this is something I should probably look at, or they're afraid it's a tax bill, maybe.
Good news.
Good news, it's not. But I think it's great that you're taking on this initiative, because it is, it is an important thing that they do, and you're right, a lot of people don't know about it. We're also happy to be, you know, sharing that in the newsletter as well, but I think it's a good idea, and I support it. I'll open it up to the board, is there any, any comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Brenda. First of all, thanks for taking on this initiative. Second of all, I just want to make sure- Second of all, I just want to make sure that the committee that is working with UI also has or will reach out to the Connecticut Green Bank. I am on the board of that and have been for the last decade or so. And there are a lot of programs available through the Connecticut Green Bank that can help lower-income families as well as work with commercial real estate properties in order to help lower electrical bills and the like. So if you haven't, and perhaps you have, you should definitely speak with them.
Yes, as a former staff person with the Connecticut Green Bank, I'm very familiar with their programs. And we have done a lot of solarized campaigns in the past. And we are currently planning to do a battery storage campaign. And they're co-administrators of that new program.
Great, great. Yeah, stay on top of them because they're doing a lot of good stuff. And it's great that you have that background with them. So thank you.
I don't have too much to add. Just thank you. I mean, I support this, obviously. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none? Back to the board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your commitment. Item number six. Can I get a motion to hear and consider authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with Coilers Project Leaders USA N E L L C to provide consulting services to all else necessary to perform the project management oversight for HVAC upgrades as detailed in RFP 2023-148 in the amount not to exceed 358,729. Funding for this contract is available with the account number that's listed on the agenda. And this is Phase 1 AC at our schools. Motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Sorry.
Good, thank you.
Bro, you take your
And we have we have Jason Lee and Angeles Papa George here. And also Adam, our purchasing director on the Oh, and Jen, yes, of course. Who, anybody want to take the lead on this? Who wants to jump up and do a quick?
Oh, sure.
Adam, it's you, Adam. Sorry, you're pointing to you, Adam.
No, it's fine. I'll kick things off. Yeah, so we put out RFP 2023-148 with responses due on June 2nd. The building committee got together and reviewed. There were two responses. The building committee got together, reviewed them. And through a proper scoring matrix review process, they recommended going with Colliers. So there was an award resolution that the purchasing authority signed off on. The, you know, I believe the school district has experience with this firm. So no concerns on that end. In terms of the contract, I've been working with the consultant to iron out a contract. But we were using one that Attorney Baldwin has previously approved. And I've been in touch with him. He's given me the okay on the draft so far.
Very good. I'll open it up to the board for questions.
I just want to make sure that this has gone through the appropriate, that the contract has gone through the appropriate legal review. And there was nothing funky with the RFP processes. I usually ask these questions.
Yep. And that's what I was trying to, to point to there, Selectman Flynn, that I've been working directly with the consultant and then on the contract and sharing that information with Attorney Baldwin. And he's had a chance to review. He got back to me today and said everything, you know, he gave me two final changes, said everything else looks good. And the RFP process went through without a hitch.
I was just wondering whether either the purchasing or the town attorney was on the phone. That's why I asked the question.
This is Jim Baldwin, Town Attorney. I'm on.
Jim, all's good with this contract. We don't have to do anything that says, you know, except for nits and nats or anything like that.
Everything that Adam just told you is accurate.
I wasn't trying to second guess you, Adam. I just wanted to hear from the town attorney because it's gotten into trouble in the past. So, okay, fair enough. Thank you so much.
If there's no additional comment from the board, is there any comment from the public on this item?
I was just going to say that I appreciate Selectman Flynn doing his due diligence and asking the questions. So I don't have to. And it's become his mantra. So I appreciate it and appreciate the verification and validation. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz.
Is there any comment from the public on this item? I just want to say I'm excited that this is starting, you know, which has been a long road. And I'm glad we're getting, you know, to the getting towards closer to getting it done. And I think it'll be well-received and much appreciated by everyone in those buildings. So thank you for both of your work on it, especially our building committee people, our volunteers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no further comment from anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Very good. Thanks so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jen. Item number eight, tax collector. Can I get a motion to hear and consider an act about the tax refunds recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $22,279.72?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. And I just have a couple of items. I just want to first and foremost say Happy Father's Day, Tom. I hope you had a nice day.
Thank you so much.
And I know you had a nice trip with your son recently to Ireland. So that must have been really a lot of fun. And Happy Father's Day to all our dads. And I want to congratulate our schools, two high schools and all of our students who graduated or participated in moving up ceremonies. I was lucky enough to attend Ledlow this year because now after COVID, we had the back-to-back nights, which was so fun. But I had to pick and choose. So last year I chose Ward, my alma mater. And this year I chose Ledlow. And while it rained, you know, when the ceremony started, the kids were still having a great time. And everybody was having fun. And it was just, it's just always really fun and exciting to see the kids and their families and all the hard work that goes into to getting your child across that first finish line there. It's just really inspiring and fun time for me to enjoy. And I would like to say that I appreciated our turnout, the turnout for our pride flag raising last week. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec Commission for really taking the vision I had for this two years ago to move this into a more fun family event in addition to the flag raising. And it was a really nice turnout, so much fun. Everybody was having a good time and just a lot of joy. And the food was good, too. We had fun. The food trucks were good. And I want to thank especially Reverend Sarah Smith, who has joined us the last few years. And she's just always so inspirational and uplifting. And I always enjoy being around her. So I want to thank her for taking the time to come to our flag raising every year. And I want to recognize that today is Juneteenth. And I did post on social media about it. And our newsletter doesn't go out till Friday. But I did want to read, if you could indulge me, a proclamation, that official proclamation that I did share with the diocese of the Black Church and Diocese in Bridgeport. On June 19th, in 1865, months after the Civil War ended and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, freeing enslaved people, Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to free 250,000 people who were still held in bondage. The arrival of Major General Gordon Granger and his troops signaled that the federal government would not relent until the last enslaved people in America were free. Whereas on Juneteenth, we commemorate that day and honor the tireless work of abolitionists who made it their mission to deliver the promise of America to all Americans. We honor the generations of activists who have advanced the need for our nation to recognize Juneteenth as a way to reconcile our past as we build a better American future together. Whereas, as we observe Juneteenth, we remind ourselves of the proposition rooted in the Declaration of Independence, that we are all created equal and in the image of God. And each of us deserves to be treated equally throughout our lives. That is the promise of America, and every generation is charged to keep it alive. Whereas, I call upon the people of Fairfield to acknowledge and condemn the history of slavery in our country and recommit to working together to eradicate any inequity and injustice in our society wherever they may find it. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Elkupchik, the first selectwoman of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth Day in the town of Fairfield and call upon our residents to recognize the importance of this day and appreciate and celebrate one another. And I know there were a number of celebrations over the weekend that I know a lot of people joined in on. And I appreciate the doing that. And that we had presented this proclamation to the church on Friday because they were using it for some events they were having on the weekend. And I just wanted to, you know, take the chance to acknowledge that and read that at the meeting today. Does anyone have any new business they would like to share with the board or with the community? Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'll say by way of follow-up, you know, thank you for reading that. Proclamations are nice. However, we have an opportunity for a federal holiday that has been in effect since June of 2021. We have an opportunity to really observe and walk the walk in many places where municipalities, town halls, businesses like mine, and so many around the country are closed. It's not just enough to talk about how we celebrate and observe. We have an opportunity to actually do that work because action needs to be matched with words. As you said, Juneteenth is a reminder that the fight for racial equity carries on and it continues. So it's not enough to say we, as a town, care about it. We have to act. I did put this to Jen and then Jen Carpenter in your office. And then was given back a response from the head of HR who said they just didn't have time. But I would push back and say publicly that this law has been in effect for almost two years. And that the country, when we voted to observe this, when lawmakers voted to put this into to make it a federal holiday, I recognize it's a choice that you don't have to close offices. But it's a choice you could make to keep essential workers. And it would be an opportunity to have an official observance, which would be clear evidence, not just a statement of, clear evidence of the work that still needs to be done. So to me, I'm here because I think the meeting is important. I wanted to be able to put my vote on record for for the candidates that came before us for Fair TV and the Ethics Commission. But it's also pretty disappointing to me to, that we carried out this meeting and given the reasons that the head of HR did. So I would just think that I hope this is food for thought for next year. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that, Nancy. And I just want to, you know, clarify for the community that I know that the racial task force that you chaired, you know, concluded, I believe you issued a blueprint on 1/622 and that Juneteenth was not included as a town holiday, as one of the recommendations. And so just to be clear, 19 states out of 50 have this deemed as a state holiday, and those are state employees. And I know that when I worked in a congressional office, I know sometimes the state employees would have days off where we didn't and then vice versa. So each town has to make their own decisions. And it's not, it's not like running a business where you're letting some people off. This is a, you know, multimillion-dollar organization. You know, there are over 500 employees. There are numerous bargaining units. And you just, it's not a simple switch to just say, I'm going to now give everybody a day off, which could cost an extraordinary amount of money. And it's not, it's not to say that we don't respect the holiday or that it's not an important holiday. But again, these are all bargaining things that have to be done within the bargaining units. And so people can take time off to recognize a holiday. I know not all holidays that may be important to specific people are technically given or as holidays. But I know this is fairly new. I know the governor had only signed it recently as well for the state. And again, there's only 19 states. And as we move forward, we will look at these things. And these are things that have to be, I get what you're saying. It's a nice thing. But it's much more complicated than just saying, okay, we're making this a holiday. Because there are real cost implications for an organization the size of Fairfield when those types of things are taken. So it's not a reflection of caring about something. It's just a little bit more complicated than that. Tom, do you have any thing?
No, I think I, I thought that there might be something with the bargaining units when this came up. And I think people are starting to figure out ways to appropriately recognize this day. And giving time off is one of them and should be under consideration.
Is, do we have, who's going to, who can answer that officially in terms of an official position about bargaining units? I'm not suggesting it's not, but it just seems to me, and I'm not saying it's not quote complicated. First of all, we didn't have to have this meeting today, but neither here nor there. I'm not suggesting it's not complicated. But I am suggesting that it is a reflection of how important or not it is. So I'm simply suggesting that we have an opportunity to do what I will say better for next year. But I would like to get an official answer in terms of bargaining units. If this is part of the, because it feels like it's weighing in something that it seems surprising to me. But I'd love that official answer.
So I don't, I know that Kathleen Simpson, our HR Director, exchanged a few emails with you back and forth. So each of our bargaining units have different contract language. So some, you know, some bargaining units get the day after Thanksgiving off. Some get, you know, this holiday off, some get that holiday off. They bargain for those holidays or time off. And we, as you know, and maybe, or maybe don't know, we have the THIA, which you've, you've been privy to that. Conversations, those are all our admins. And we have our supervisors that are PETA. We have nurses. We have the telecommunications union. We have the police union, the fire union, and public works. So there are a lot of unions that all bargain. And so, you know, to give, to just blanketly give a holiday off, you know, we're talking about our first responders who have to work, you know, have to be paid overtime. There's a lot of cost implications that are involved with something like that. And also giving these extra days. So there is more that goes into it. It does, it's not a reflection of caring about a holiday. It's, what does it cost? And do the workers or these bargaining units want that day? Or do they want some other thing?
Right.
In, you know, in exchange during salary negotiations, medical benefit, cost sharing, you know, all the different things that make up a contract negotiation. So each union has their own sort of things that they care about and want.
The only, the only last comment I'll make, because I actually felt bad about it when during Nancy's commentary is we, as the board of selectmen, actually voted on the date of this. And so when we set out the schedule for our meeting dates months back, we goofed up on that. Now, I don't know if there was any internal discussions once it was realized, you know, to move that date. I was not privy to that. But I feel bad because we voted on this, I think, back in December, January. And we goofed it up on voting on June 19th.
And I agree with that, which is why I frankly was going along for weeks and weeks. It wasn't until last week when I stopped and sort of said, oh, because I was in the work zone. But I do think that, Tom, you're right. Meetings have been canceled for less or rearranged for less significant reasons. And again, we don't have to go back and forth now. I'm simply
Sure, 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 sure.
For next year, we have an opportunity For next year, we have an opportunity. I'm not suggesting it's not something that needs to be considered. I don't know what the math that is, nor do I necessarily think that's the right, solely the only metric. I'm simply suggesting my POV today is one of frustration and proclamations are nice, but action is even nicer. So food for thought, and I don't really have anything else to say. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, thank you. And again, you know, you're, to Tom's point, we did vote on these meeting dates, and the town is open. You know, town business is happening. And so I don't think anyone was thinking that we wouldn't have a meeting considering there is town business open. So again, we can have this discussion. And I just want to say for the record, yes, proclamations are nice. Attending events and honoring people arriving at, going to the pride event to raise the pride flag, going to veterans' events to honor our veterans, you know, doing all of these things to show our commitment to people we care about are all important parts of our, being part of the community. And I hope that we can have this conversation going forward. And I think this is a fairly new holiday, and it's something that we will be talking about more and more as time goes on. So I appreciate the conversation. Is there any further comments on any item or any new business that anyone would like to bring up?
Nope.
All right. All right, very good. Well, thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye, thanks so much.
Bye-bye.